I'd like to call to the Board of Education for Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, on Tuesday, March 11th, 2014. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Here.
Mr. Edson? Mr. Schreiber? Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mr. Burkner?
I'm here too. I'll start off with the President's Report. I've just got a very brief one tonight. First, I want to acknowledge on behalf of the Board, the passing of Mr. Bill Hinchman, who is a longtime resident of Lake Forest. He was an Army veteran and a career banker, but more than that, for our purposes, he was an active member in the community and served on this board from 2000, or 1985 to 2003. Is that even possible? It's a long time to be on this board. He was first the Vice President of Finance and then ended his time here as the President of the Board from 2000, 2003. So the Board extends its condolences to the Hinchman family and thanks him for all his service. On a happier note, and I see one of the prominent faces from that happier note out in our audience, had the opportunity on Saturday night to enjoy the last of three talent shows this year, and I want to congratulate the APT on their support, but more so the students and Ms. Wally for her fantastic job running the show with her partner. It was terrific. And then, the last thing, on a business note, and this is really more for informational purposes to the rest of the Board, to let you know that during the month of February, I was called to testify before the Illinois Education Labor Review Board pursuant to an unfair labor practices claim that was asserted by the teachers' union here following the 2012 strike. The briefs from that hearing are due by mid-April and the conclusion decision of the arbitration judge is expected by the end of June, so we will keep the rest of the Board and community apprised as we know more. And that's all I've got. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Burkner. I'd like to call on Mr. Rogers to begin the Superintendent's Report.
First, it's my pleasure to announce Lake Forest High School's first-ever state wrestling champion, Matt Fiedrosa and his athlete, Regis. So Regis is our state champion, so if you can come on up to the microphone. Just a quick word about Regis. Ended up the season undefeated, again, our only athlete ever to win a state, capture a state championship, facing one of the toughest competitors in the whole country. And so I think Matt will tell us a little bit about that. And also another little piece just about Regis, he truly is a leader within the school and also led our football team to a great season as our quarterback.
Yeah, it was an incredible season. It was tough to believe, but heading into the state tournament, he was undefeated but still ranked 10th in the state. So, pretty big underdog going into it. In the semifinals, we beat a kid that was ranked second in the state, number 16 in the country, in an overtime match, which was super thrilling, probably the match of the day that round. And then, in the finals, we wrestled a kid that was 51-0 from Lockport, was ranked number one in state and was ranked number nine in the country. And we beat him in a sudden-death tiebreaker for the state championship. It was incredible. It's actually being on TV right now. It's playing. That's all.
Regis, would you like to say a couple words?
Sure. You know, it's been really an incredible experience and I can't thank my coach enough. And, you know, it was really life-changing. And it's been a great four years and it was amazing and had a lot of fun doing it.
Regis, don't go away yet. Don't go, you don't get away that easily here. Sorry. All right. So, Regis, I'm gonna jump in here because I can't resist, and anytime you get a chance to talk to a kid in a moment like this, you take it. So, now you're a very, play the cards close to your vest guy, and all the reports on this were that you were more than a little exuberant at the end of it.
Yeah.
Right? Can you tell us a little bit about that? And then also tell us a little bit about your coach and your teammates and the support that they both lended to you.
So, you know, usually in my matches when I win, I'm, you know, you said, I'm not very emotional, but it was insane, the emotions downstate. And, you know, after winning that semifinal match, you know, I got up and ran around the circle once and, you know, it was crazy, the emotions going through me. And, you know, the finals match was even more emotional, so it was a great experience. You know, I can't, you know, like I said, I can't thank my coach enough. And, you know, one of my drill partners, Matt Harmon, he was a 220-pounder and he came down with us to state. You know, we're really tight and, you know, it helped a lot and, yeah.
So, now, is this something that you thought you'd wind up having a shot at? I mean, what do you, realistically, going down there, what was going through your, what was going through your mind?
I mean, realistically, just take it one match at a time. And, you know, one of my goals of the beginning of the season was to be all-state. So, I really wanted to accomplish that. And once I accomplished that, winning my quarterfinal match, you know, I decided that I really just wanted to, you know, let it fly and whatever happened, happened and, you know, I was able to have success. Thank you.
Regis, any plan? What are your plans for next year in terms of college? Are you gonna keep it up?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
So, we went from going into the wrestling season, I didn't think he had any interest in wrestling at all in college. Was pretty much committed for football, was trying to get in some early declarations for football, and we haven't heard anything back. And then, the Sunday after the state tournament, we were probably coached, or we were approached by probably 15 different colleges, probably six of them in the top 10 in the country for wrestling. And we had the head coaches from Northwestern over at his house just last night. So, it's been, it's been quite the shock. And then on top of that, it's been really neat from the standpoint of what it's done for the community, where we've had the coaches from Libertyville was super excited to see what had happened. The officials from around this area were very excited to see when he won. We've had letters from other high schools in the area. Glenbrook North wrote us a letter today saying that they were so proud and all the things that they saw. There were things from kids that I wrestled with in high school that said that they were in tears when they watched it. So, it was, it's been, it was awesome. So...
Mr. Burkner's gonna watch Vision Quest tonight, just to make sure everybody's jazzed up.
We need to get this rolling so I can get home to do that.
I'm sure that's a testament, not just to Regis' talent, but to the quality of your program overall, that you have that kind of respect from the schools in the area and the other officials. So, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. And it's, one of the biggest things was that, just a couple of years ago, was, it was, there was talk that we might have been getting rid of the wrestling program. So, to come to, from something like that, to having a state champ, let alone the first state champion in school history, was quite the journey. So, thank you.
I'd throw something else out here. One of the really nice things about the wrestling program, and this isn't really a wrestling kind of town, this is, wrestling is not a country club sport, as some of you may have noticed. One of the things that is true about wrestling is probably, pound for pound, the most exciting sport to watch of all the sports. It's also the sport in which you see the most kids cry, because there's nowhere to hide and there's no one to hide behind. It's really an individual sport. But behind them actually winds up being a coach. And one of the really heartening things that I saw this year in my trips around the school and watching your kids practice and also watching them wrestle, is you had a student come out this year, he's a 12th grader, and had never wrestled before. And I knew he'd never wrestled before because I saw him in the stands before his match, wolfing down his dinner, okay? Which is like, after your weigh-in, and which is something you never do. But you've taken all-comers and you've grown the team and you've grown champions and you've grown kids that aren't going to state meets, but have really been enriched by the program. And so, for all those kids, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would add to that. As a parent of a son who wrestled some years ago, I think maybe before your time, but just second what Mike just said, one of my sons had a really great experience with Deerpath Wrestling and wrestled at the high school, I think for two years. Didn't win a match, I don't believe, an officially sanctioned match, but the coaches were always there for him and he enjoyed it. And he's now an assistant wrestling coach at a high school that he's student teaching at, so...
That's awesome.
It just goes to reflect, I think, the quality of staff and the dedication and the caring that's there. So, congratulations from the top to the bottom, so to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Coach Fiedrosa. And Regis, you really represent what's best about our school. Outstanding. Next, it's my pleasure to announce two new appointments to our administrative staff. First is Jim Sullivan. Jim, if you'd wave to everybody. So Jim is our current Science Chairperson. He also serves as a Director of Evaluation. Jim is a longtime employee here at Lake Forest and exemplifies, I think, the best characters of integrity, vision in terms of moving our school forward, and just a total team player. So we're very excited to bring Jim on, and Jim will be our Assistant Principal in charge of evaluation and assessment. So, thanks, Jim. And we'd also like to introduce now our second Assistant Principal. And I don't know who's gonna go first. I mean, you guys can flip for that. Who will be the first Assistant Principal, the second one? Or maybe you guys can wrestle. Where's these guys at? Okay. But we're very, you know, equally excited to bring Tom Maher on board. Tom is our current Math Chairperson, has served the school in numerous capacities. And again, another visionary leader, someone who I think brings the best in every one of the team players on our leadership team. And so, really excited what he brought to the school, but I think even more excited about the path forward. So, we're very excited about the promise that you both bring to our school community. So, thank you, gentlemen. I'd now like to pass the mic to our very own Student Council President, Kate Wally.
Brief update tonight. This past weekend was the 53rd Annual APT Talent Show. You ain't seen nothing yet. Over 250 students were involved in the production on and off the stage, and it was really a big success. Third quarter ends next week, which means that spring break is right around the corner, and there are tons of LFHS students that'll be traveling, including the choir on a tour of Switzerland and the China Exchange Program. As always, there has been tons of school spirit for the basketball games and other spring sports that have just started, thanks to Scout Nation. And there are many service projects going on, including the Women's Club Glass Slipper Project, a book drive, and Student Council will be packaging and supplying several supplies for the troops overseas this Thursday morning. So, just a couple of things going on and looking forward to spring break.
Thanks, Kate. I'd like now to do a short presentation and update of our One-to-One Computing Initiative. An important goal set forth by the Board of Education, and one that was also duplicated by our leadership team, was to really use technology to enhance instruction, to inspire the best in our students. And so, our initiative, which we're calling Leading Edge Learning, is a very exciting initiative to bring mobile computing and all the practices that go with it to realize the potential of the 21st century classroom. We know that our students have an exciting world. There's a Chinese proverb that says, "May you live in exciting times." So, Kate and Regis, they live in really exciting times. The world is before them. And they're gonna be interacting with students, not only here at Lake Forest, but around the globe. And they're gonna have jobs that are yet to find. Through this process, we've looked at lots of different models. We've visited a number of schools. We've put together a great team of teachers, administrators, and students in terms of this initiative. And so where we landed is we're landed at the Google Apps for Education. And we feel strongly about this because we think, believes, we believe that it provides the best ecosystem or environment to have 21st century learning, that collaboration, the creativity, the connectivity that's out there. The vast amounts of content that's now out there, the devices out there, really provide a lot of promise going forward. And so, what you'll see right now is there are numerous universities, both within our state and around the globe, that are using Google Apps for Education every day. So when you go into the Google Apps for Education world, you really are connecting to a whole world of resources. Some of the top professors around the world, it's not unusual for anyone who wants to now dial into a Nobel Laureate and hear their lecture, the possibilities really are endless, really are endless. One of the exciting things is really the shift from about teaching to learning. I know I'm a proud father of two boys, and they don't learn anymore just in the classroom. They're out there every day. It's not unusual for me to come, tap my son on the shoulder and say, "What did you learn about today?" And the other day, I say, "Oh, we're just, we're trying to create an animation. We saw something like this in school and now we're trying to do it." "Oh, I'm working on my homework." And at the same time, they're FaceTiming their body or in a Google Hangout. The underlying principles in terms of 21st century learning really are the four Cs. Many people call it critical thinking, the communication, and the collaboration and creativity. Using technology for, simply for technology's sake, isn't worth it. It is an investment. But when we start to use it to leverage the four Cs in 21st century learning, again, the possibilities are endless. One of the things we've been talking about in terms of our mission vision is how do we create a culture of innovation? How do we help move this culture forward? The possibilities you have with exciting new tools, really, I think, make it a possibility. One of the things that I'm excited about is when work can happen. It can happen in real time. It's not just simply, "You're gonna learn at this particular moment." I think it's exciting too, is our teachers right now are creating their own content. We have teachers that are working on flipping the classroom. We have teachers working on new types of assessment. We have a teacher who's working with a program called Scholar out of the University of Illinois, where they are actually blogging and the amount of collaboration between students has magnified by tenfold. So, you'll also hear about a lot of the higher-order thinking skills that we're looking for in terms of technology and in terms of power. And I think it brings up an important notion. You have a lot of things that are happening. We brought before you ideas about assessment, ideas about Common Core. Now we're talking about technology. Our job now as educators is to bring coherence to this conversation. And I think a lot of it comes around these higher-level thinking questions. How are we using technology to analyze, to evaluate, and to create? And this becomes extremely important for our students to do because they will be competing in a global market. One of the fun things, and I know a lot of people already have Google Tools out there, is multiple devices can be used, so you are not locked into one particular device. We already have students that are piloting or sandboxing this work, and they're workshopping each other's composition. Pretty exciting stuff. So as one student starts to write on there, another student can see it. You can pair them up. You can annotate, you can edit. Right now, we're still working through all of the details, but our proposal, in terms of our implementation model, looks at the process that we're currently doing right now, which is sandboxing or piloting Chromebooks throughout the school. In the 2013, 2014, 2015 school year, we hope to roll out an initiative for all freshmen. And then in the coming years, Chromebooks for all of our students. Again, this is just a proposal that we're working through at this point. And one of the exciting pieces about what the possibilities are for teachers, when I sat down with the head of our union at the beginning of the year, I said, "What is one thing that our teachers could really leverage, that really helped move them forward? Really would be a big win for teachers and a big win for students?" And she said unequivocally, the first thing out of her mouth was, "Technology." And so I think the possibilities here are endless, and we're looking at doing summer institutes with our teachers, building our Kessler Training Institute, which is our mode of training for many of our teachers, bringing this into the conversations that we're gonna have as teachers do work in PLCs. One of the other attractive benefits in terms of looking at the Chromebooks and the Google Apps for Education environment is it is an efficient device. It is one where I think the cost curve has been made very attractive to school districts. Managing, if you talk to Cornelius DeBois, our Technology Director, he'll tell you, the management in the Chrome world has been simplified and efficient for those individuals that have to do that. And the reality is, no matter how big your ideas are, no matter how great your curriculum is, if it's not efficient, if it's not sustainable, it's not gonna work in the classroom. So, an example would be, if you want to push down a particular application, and there really are now over a million applications this year, Google passed the million mark, so did Apple, but you can simply manage just a few devices or push down that information on the 40,000 devices. On the student's perspective, they can get to lessons within a second. If they don't, if they need to go back and review something, that information is there. If they need to accelerate learning, that information is there. One of the other big initiatives that we're talking about is how do we make learning accessible for all students? And so that involves accelerating learning for students where we need to accelerate it. And it also means helping students and bringing up to a mastery level. So I think the technology allows for that as well. If you've been around the Google Chrome Web Store, lots of cool apps on just about anything that you're interested in. Okay? And so really, it's about imagining what's possible. What's possible for our students, what's possible for our teachers, and what's possible for our community going forward. So that concludes our update of our technology initiative, and I hope you see those possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And I've got a couple of other things to add to that. I'd like to echo Mr. Burkner's compliments of Ms. Wally and her stellar performance at the talent show.
Hashtag.
Hashtag. Kate Wally, right. I was speaking to a student this past, this past week after the talent show and said, "Hey, you know, what's Kate Wally gonna be doing next year?" And the response was, "I don't know, but it's gonna be really great." So, you've got at least one follower out there on your hashtag, expecting great things, but really composed, really a kind person to other kids, and really a good emcee on top of it all. So, well done. Our Mission Vision Goals project has consumed a very substantial portion of the time. This past month, we've been on the speaking circuit, both for District 67 and for 115. We've gotten a lot of feedback from a variety of groups. A number of things, perhaps most interesting, are the things they pointed out that were missing from the original draft and additions that they'd like to make. There are also certain themes that have come out that I won't get into here, but the Board can expect to see those at our upcoming off-site to review the original draft and incorporate the feedback that we've gotten. Board Member Monty Edson has lent a great deal of time and effort to this project, and he's been in attendance at most of the feedback sessions as well. One of the things that is, I'd like to point out, there's a couple of points of pride on this, is we had a community book read of The Smartest Kids in the World, written by Amanda Ripley, New York Times bestselling book. And the bookstore, local bookstore, sold well over 150 copies of this, a variety of people. The last time I checked, they were at 150 and counting, and had run out of books a number of times. One of the most encouraging aspects of it wasn't just how many community members read it, but that we had 40 high school staff members sign up that read the book and also participated in four multiple-hour sessions after school to discuss it. I had the pleasure of being invited to speak to them. And the amount of investment that they had in that, both in terms of time, but also in terms of emotion and passion, was really significant. And it was obvious that, when I had a chance to speak to them, that they had a very high regard for Lauren Fagel, who was leading the workshop, that she had done a really expert job in creating the conditions where people felt free to open up and share. And I think it laid the groundwork for a lot of the things that we're looking forward to doing as an organization. I guess that leads me also to my final point, which is to welcome Mr. Sullivan, soon to be voted on by the Board. Not yet, but it's on the docket. And also, Mr. Maher, having had the pleasure of working with both of you for long periods of time, it's really encouraging to hear the conversations around the Board table about the level, the competence of your work and your commitment and your passion. And the conversation just today with Mr. Maher, I can say I've always been impressed with you, but certainly never more so than I was today. And that it's very obvious that we're adding a really smart and really caring person to join Mr. Sullivan on the administrative team. So, welcome onboard.
Thank you, Mike. We've come to the point of the program where public participation is encouraged. If anyone would like to address the Board, now is your chance. Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Maher?
Tom and Jim, you're welcome to make, say a few words on TV.
You're so quiet. Hey, you're...
There should be a fight song involved or something, I would think.
We're just a fight. I think our reports and discussions have occurred, Mr. Rogers giving his technology initiative presentation earlier. Are there other reports, Mr. Simic, that you're aware of?
No, sir.
No. So that takes us all the way down to Board Committees with the Board Education Committee. Nikki Snoblen.
The Education Committee met last Friday, the 7th, and saw the exact same presentation that you just saw tonight from Mr. Rogers about the One-to-One Computing Initiative that now has a snazzier name that I can't remember.
Leading Edge Learning.
Thank you. Leading Edge Learning. And so I won't go into any details on that because you've heard it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Block?
Thank you, Mr. Burkner. The Finance and Operations Committee met last Wednesday morning, the 6th, and we talked about a number of topics, including the Leading Edge Learning Initiative. So I won't spend much time on that either. You heard from Principal Rogers, early, rest of the Board members and community about the substance of the initiative, and we're still trying to wrestle with costs and those kinds of things. But needless to say, it's exciting, and I think it is fair to say that it has the community's conceptual support. We talked about a number of less important issues, namely, one of the lessors of our cell tower at East Campus is leaving us AT and, excuse me, Singular, but AT&amp;T would like to step into their shoes. The staff has negotiated a new arrangement with them, and it looks like we'll recover the great bulk of that revenue we otherwise would have lost from Singular leaving. We've got a renewal of the lease of a small activity bus on the agenda for later tonight, so I really won't spend much time talking that, about that, other than to say the committee reviewed it and supports it. Periodically, we've been looking at our long-term debt and opportunities that exist in this low-interest rate environment to possibly refinance some of that debt in order to save the taxpayers some money. We did it about a year ago, and we've just recently redone it again. And I think that has sparked some further thinking about what the possibilities may be. It's a little bit of a risk-reward situation. We've got a bird in the hand, that's not bad. But with interest rates low, the longer they remain low, the better the opportunity is for us to potentially refinance, and we're gonna keep a very close eye on that. We've agreed not to take action immediately. We didn't think it was appropriate, but we wanna keep our eye on the ball such that we don't wanna pass up an opportunity. So just to let everybody know, we're thinking about that. And if you'd like any further information, Alan's got a presentation that Liz Hennessy has prepared for us that I think is reasonably self-explanatory and you could share. Some of you may know, there's a small residential development in the Conway industrial area, off of Field Drive, that has received new ownership, and that new ownership and development is interested in being a next into the Lake Forest High School District boundaries. They're not currently within the boundaries, so just as a heads-up, we are in the process of discussions with them. We think it's probably a good thing for the district to do, and respective legal teams are looking at the technicalities associated with doing that. And you can expect to hear more about that in time, I believe. Lastly, we looked at the monthly financial package that the Board and therefore the public receives on district financial operations and condition, with an eye towards what the staff believes are the most important components of that. What we should be looking at is Board members and new committee members. And I would say it was a good discussion and a decision was made to keep the package as it is at the time, for the time being. and a decision was made to keep the package as it is at the time, for the time being, that it was a useful set of documents. So that's it. We are in the process of finalizing a meeting in early April. The 4th is tentatively on the table, April 4th at 8:00 a.m. at East Campus. But I don't think we've heard back from all the committee members at this juncture as to whether that's possible. But the goal is to have another meeting prior to our next regular board meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Both Ms. Snowblin and Mr. Block referenced the, their committees, having seen the presentation and had the discussion around the Leading Edge Initiative that Mr. Rogers just went through here. I think it's, it's probably worth mentioning that we have board work to do where this is concerned. I think it's safe to say that the board has expressed a lot of, is very intrigued by the initiative and supportive of the concept. But there's a lot of background information that we need to have some understanding, not the least of which is cost and how that's, that's covered. So I just want to recognize that, given the timeline that you laid out there, and the desire to have this up and running as the new school year starts, that there is a need to get those who will be teaching in the classroom up to speed before, before that. And so we'll need to take action at some point soon, and just want to commit that the board will, will scramble to do what it needs to do to get the knowledge that it needs to be able to make a determination on its support of going forward with this. Liaison reports, I believe we have one, Mr. Mormon, on NSSCD.
Yes, the NSSCD met last week, and they're looking at their finances and what they would like to have as basically revenue on hand, or, you know, fund balances. Currently, they, similar to us, they have about a $42 million budget. And right now, they have a fund balance reserve of 23%, which is kind of high. They're, they're looking to, and they would like approval of the 18-member boards to shoot for a target of 15%, plus or minus 3%. Like I said, right now, they have 23% or about $10 million unallocated funds. Their concern is, unlike us, they get the majority of their funds from idea funds, which are given up by the member districts. And the majority of those funds are dispersed by the state. Their feeling is that they, you know, if the state's late, you know, they may not be able to, you know, fund their operations. I would suggest to the board that we go back and ask them to have a lower fund reserve. And I would think more along, our own board uses 10%. And I think 10% is a reasonable number, because one of the things with the NSSCD is if they have a shortfall, the board can vote, and it's a requirement that all the 18-member districts pony up the shortfall. So they actually have pretty good flexibility. And, you know, we are basically their, you know, their backstop, or, you know, funds of last resort. And at this point, you know, I'd like the board to provide, you know, direction for me in our vote next month to NSSCD. And like I said, I think their reserve is high. And they also have said that shooting for 15, when it goes above, if it looks like it's going to stay above, that they would refund to the districts. And if it goes below 12%, that, then it looks like it's going to stay below, they would ask for the member districts to make an additional allotment to bring it back up to 15%. At this point, you know, just like to see if anybody else has any other thoughts on which way we should proceed.
I'm a little curious about one thing. When our district's fund balance goes below our target, we can't go ask for more money. Generally, we have to find ways to, to cut expenses. Is that an option for them? Like, let's say they decide their fund balance is too high, and they refund some of that. If they feel that it's, that it's getting too low, are they're just, they're just going to come to the districts and ask for more money?
Yes, and that is in our contract, that if they do have a funding shortfall, that they can vote. And we are, we have all already agreed contractually to provide, you know, make up for any shortfall. So they do have actually, you know, better options than we have, because like you just said, you know, our only option is to look for places to cut. Their option is to, you know, go hat-in-hand to the districts. And if it's voted on, there's not really a whole lot we can do except pony up.
Are they seeking to define what a funding shortfall means? Is it a subjective thing in our contract?
It is very subjective. And basically, what they're looking at is, like I said, if it goes below 12% due to, you know, roof failure, you know, boiler failure, something where it's not going to come back up, they would look to, you know, you know, reach out to the member districts to, you know, bring the fund back up to 15%. But it is very subjective as opposed to whether they think they can get back to 15% on their own through time, or if it's a situation that would require, you know, fund enhancements.
But the 15% that we're talking about now, is that already a board-established goal, target?
It is a target, but obviously, it's a pretty loose target, because we're at 23% at this point. And their thoughts were that, you know, with SB 1, and not really knowing if there's going to be a situation where districts would have to increase funding for pensions, they're kind of holding that as a reserve. But like I said, right now, with 23% reserve balance, they're sitting pretty fat.
The 15%, we have a board target of 10% or more. Is there, are the differences in how NSSCD is funded compared to how we're funded, such that a higher reserve is, is appropriate?
You could look at it two ways. Our funding basically is property taxes that, you know, we get in June and September. Their funding mainly comes from idea funds from the state. And their concern is that if the state is late, and they have been late in the past, but then again, you know, we can't go and get an additional tranche, you know, from the taxpayers, whereas they can come to us, and if the board votes on it, you know, they could ask for more funds from the 18-member districts.
Are there questions or comments from Mr. Mormon? And so the, is there an ask or seeking guidance?
Well, basically, at this point, I'd be asking for guidance, or asking whether the board would, our board would ask staff at NSSCD whether they should do a little more research. It's not something that has to be done. They were looking to have it voted on at the past meeting, but there, you know, these concerns came up, and now they're looking to do it at the next meeting, which would be April 5th, I believe, you know, right before our meeting. So at this point, I'd be, you know, asking for direction from our board, how we would like to proceed.
Based on your insight, do you have a recommendation?
I would actually ask that we ask them to lower the, the target, you know, maybe to 10% to 12%, you know, plus or minus 3%.
So Ted, are they obligated to do that? I'm not familiar with the product. Can they say, okay, well, thanks for asking, but we're going to do what we've always done? Or is there a vote majority from the other districts?
It would be what the 18-member districts direct their staff to do. So we, basically, we have one out of 18 votes.
Yeah, I would just ask, is the financial staff up to speed on this? And Alan, do you all have a recommendation? Or were you hearing this for the first time?
I'd want to have some, I have some initial comments. Based on what you're saying, I would think that many of the member districts would rather have the funds reside in the member districts. The issue comes in, if there is a shortfall, would that occur after we've adopted a budget, which could cause hardship? So if they come to us and say, hey, we need $50,000 before the end of the year. So we would have to have a conversation about the timing of it. If the timing could be such that it would be the following fiscal year, if there was a projected shortfall, then I would certainly concur with what Mr. Mormon's saying about, I think those funds should reside with the member districts, not in the co-op.
But there hasn't been a discussion at the staff level amongst the 18-member districts, is what I'm gathering, about this in a consensus form?
I haven't been, been part of any, and I don't know if Jen has.
I wasn't at that finance meeting, and I haven't seen the documents. But I have talked to several other districts who were in attendance that day, and they not only have the same questions as Mr. Mormon, but they have additional questions. And those seem to revolve more around some of the underlying assumptions, and also to the things such as cost-cutting and efficiencies. So I think other districts are having similar discussions.
Thanks. So it doesn't sound to me, at least, correct me, Ted, if I'm wrong, that we need to come to some sort of formal decision at this juncture as a board?
I think what he's, he's going to be asked to vote on something in April.
The staff was asking for a vote whether to approve this policy measure. And we did have it tabled last month to next month, and I don't see why we couldn't have it tabled in allowing our finance representatives to have discussions with, with the NSSCD and other member districts.
So the policy measure is just to reduce their, their fund balance, correct?
Actually, it's to maintain, they had been below, but now they want to maintain minimum of 15%. And it's interesting, they said if it goes above, you know, plus or minus 3%, then they would refund or ask for additional funds. And obviously, we're at 23%. So they haven't been real quick to refund anything. So this is basically to formalize what they should have as reserves. And I think they have more flexibility than we do, because obviously, we can't ask for additional property taxes. Like Ellen has said, that, you know, we can't just change the budget willy-nilly. It's basically gets set, and, you know, we're kind of stuck with it.
Yeah, but it sounds like part and parcel, they're asking for an automatic call provision should they run into problems. And, you know, unless the staffs of our district and the other member districts are comfortable with that, you know, I would recommend we not, as a, as a board, or you as our representative, take a position on it.
It sounds like they already have that, though, because you said that was contractual, that even now, if, if they need extra money, they can come to us and ask for it, correct?
That is correct. We are the backstop for, if they have a, you know, funding shortfall.
Stand there, but maybe I misunderstood you. I thought that what they were now trying to formalize was this 3% collar, if they fell below that 3% collar, that, as opposed to literally running out of money, now, if they just fell below 12%, they would, they would have the ability to call. And those are two wholly different scenarios in my mind.
Yeah, no, that, that is correct. And it's basically, the language they use is very kind of nebulous. It's very, it's not hard and fast. It's kind of, you know, if we go to 12%, but they don't look like they can make it up, then they come to us. But if they think over time, they can bring it back up on their own with either budget cuts. So it's very, it's kind of like, you know, soft limits. It's not hard and fast.
It's sounding kind of like our recommendation would be to vote no on that and ask them for more information.
And I would tend to go along with that also, and also giving Ellen and Jennifer a chance to talk to the other, you know.
Well, that would certainly be my recommendation as well. I agree with Nikki. In the absence of further information, I, I think we have to vote no.
Yeah, it doesn't, it sounds like...
I would ask that they table the motion till the following month, so more research can be done by our, our finance department.
It sounds like there's consensus around that. Thank you.
Okay, I have my marching orders.
We can move on to action items now. The first item is approval of replacement activity bus, which Mr. Block tempted us with during his finance report. Who has that?
Yes. I've never talked about a bus lease being so tempting before. So with that, Mr. Albus, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, the district currently leases four activity buses, and they're primarily utilized to transport students to and from a variety of extracurricular activities. The lease on one of the buses is expiring this year, and we have a proposal from Midwest Transit offering a new three-year lease at the same rate as the expiring lease. But earlier in the meeting, I was handed a note asking if we could delay this till next month and do some research on the process. And I believe we can. I sent a text to the, the rep from the company. The, the big thing is you want to get in the queue, because they only manufacture so many buses. But I think we're ahead of the curve here. So I don't believe there's an issue. I would assume the information being requested is a purchase versus a lease or duration of leases?
That is, I'm sorry to bring it up. You know, we discussed it at the finance meeting. And I just think with interest rates, if we keep rolling over the buses, you know, we're turning a bus in, getting a new bus. If we're always going to have four buses, you know, I would like to see whether it makes more sense to purchase them, you know, with interest rates so low. It seems like there might be a better option to, you know, start buying these buses and use, utilize them for five or six years, and then where they have residual, you know, value to turn in. And I know in my own business, I do a lot of the capital stuff. And actually, I turned it over to my accountant to have him just run some numbers. And then, you know, I was hoping we were going to have a chance to talk to it in the executive session. But I should be able to get back with them the next day or two, you know, what the flip side is.
So I would say our recommendation would be to table it, and then we'll follow through on any questions, and we'll bring it back to you in April.
Yeah, that's what I would ask for, just...
I would just jump in just quickly. I mean, out of respect for Ted, I have no issue with that. But the one thing I do know is we don't know anything about maintaining buses. So the idea of leasing and maintaining and making sure they're safe, I mean, somebody else takes on that responsibility. The minute we own them, then we've got to have some type of maintenance program and contract. And from my perspective, where I know absolutely nothing about...
Well, and actually, that was, the thing I passed on was extended warranties also.
Yeah, but you still own it. And, you know, my only thought or public comment would be, I don't know that we're good at that. So I think we should look into it. It's Ted suggested, but...
It runs a gamut. I came from a district that, where we bought them, but we also ran a transportation fleet, and, and we had a garage. And, and you're right, the warranty, what we do is not that uncommon for districts that don't have fleet services. But we can certainly put together pros and cons, and advantages, disadvantages, and bring that back.
I'm sympathetic both to the point, I think, of Ted's, that we put a little more rigor and a little more study into things before we commit, and also to the fact that this is a $7,000 a year decision. And I don't know how much optimization can earn us, but there's a lot on the table. And I, you know, I'm also sympathetic to the financial department's time. So if we can just deal with this in an efficient manner, I think it would be great. Okay, so...
And so do we need a motion to table it, or do we just, so is there a motion to table? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Does it require a roll call, or can we just do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. So, that motion, that action has been tabled until April. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the Human Resources Report. We've already heard the big news contained in the top two lines, and Lauren's raising the roof over there. Congratulations to both Tom and Jim. I think that's a, just personally, I think it's a great, a great advance for us. Is there anything else, Mr. Hendrick, Dr. Hendrickson? I do that every month. Doctor? That's it? May I have a motion for the approval of the Human Resources Report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I was tempted to ask, as they used to do at weddings, is there anybody on the two objects to... I decided I wouldn't put them through there.
You did it anyway. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the consent agenda. If there are any items on the consent agenda that a member would like to have held out for separate discussion, please speak now. Otherwise, the consent agenda includes approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for January 2013, minutes of a regular meeting from February 11th, 2014. I think the financial statement is probably January 2014. Minutes of an executive session, February 11th, 2014. Minutes of a school holiday calendar hearing, February 11th, 2014. Minutes of an executive session from February 18th, 2014, and disposal of audio recordings from July 17th, 2012. Is there a motion for approval?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. That motion carries. We had two Freedom of Information Act requests over the last month, one from a Mr. Brent Johnson, a non-resident, and a second from a Mr. Don Russ, who is a resident of the district. For announcements, we have Monday, March 24th through 28th as spring break. Monday, March 31st, the school reopens, and on Tuesday, April 8th, the board will meet again in this room at 7:00. Not 7:15, but 7:00. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.